Ms. Landwehr, Ms. Sari, Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Granland?
Here.
Mrs. Livingston-Matherly?
Here.
And Mrs. Zawicki? All right, we are moving to the consent agenda. You have the November 9th, 2020 regular board meeting, November 12th, 2020 special board meeting, and December 10th special meeting minutes. Open and executive sessions. Treasurers' report, Mr. Granland?
Thank you. The summary of the treasurer's report as of November 30th, 2020. In the general fund, general account, on November 30, 2020, there was a balance of $1,727,506.61 in cash and investments, received since the 1st of December and not included in the November 30 balance.
About that, and then we have some resignations as well as employment, leave of absence, and retirements. Dr. Crony?
We have received notification via text from Crystal Kennedy that she will not return to her part-time para-educator position at Northwest Elementary School. For employment, we are recommending Terry Nelson as a part-time food service aide at Northwestern Elementary School. For employment, we are recommending Terry Nelson as a part-time food service aide at Northwestern Elementary School. We are recommending Kayla Rayboine as the online learning teacher for kindergarten and first grade levels. At this moment, we do not have a response back to her, from her, because she is interviewed for a full-time position. If she does not achieve that, we have great faith that she will take this position, which of course is only part-time. Request for a leave of absence from Wade Joe Joseph, requesting a leave of absence until May 17th, 2021. And retirement, Kim Schneider, food service aide at Iron River Elementary at the conclusion of the 2021 school year after 23 years of service.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Crony?
I need to let you know, I'm having issues on my end, so I don't know if you want to pause the meeting or continue the meeting. I'm recording for Peggy's sake later, but I don't know what the issue is. So it's some, it's an internet connection issue, so.
I think we do have to continue.
Yep, and that's, I just, I just wanted to be open and clear with you.
Got it.
So I'm, I'm trying to figure stuff on my end and I'm going to go check some things out on the other end, so.
If there are any questions or comments, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, the same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to approval items. We have a request for an inter-district transfer and transportation from Iron River to Northwestern Elementary School.
As per board policy, Chris Carjola, did I pronounce that correctly? Carjola. Is she here? Is she here? No? Okay. As per board policy, the person needs to be present for the board to consider this. So I don't know if something has come up for her. If she shows up later on in the meeting, would we be allowed to have her talk to us then?
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll just move on from that for now.
Okay.
Report and recommendations from the December 14th, 2020 curriculum committee meeting. Our chair is Mrs. Sari.
I have a question first. Is it technical difficulties so it's not being?
It's not being livestreamed, but it's an open meeting, so we are not in violation of open meetings law. It's just a nice little extra of having it livestreamed for our, our community.
Well, yeah, exactly. There was close to 300 people watching our last meeting.
This one isn't as exciting.
Not yet.
Well, we don't know when this technical issue might last.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, um, the meeting was, um, for the curriculum was for Advanced English 10. And, um, we are going to be piloting a three-year program for grade 10, and would be one credit.
Dan here.
They need your mic. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry about that. Um, okay, the course is for the Advanced English 10. And as for Jovan Kroll, it'd be, and it's a three-year pilot, and it's a one credit. Another one was for Introduction to Engineering. Uh, there's, uh, it is with, um, let's see, grades nine through 12, and, um, and it's for half credit for that. And then we have Applied Engineering, which would be with Lawrence Charlie 8, and that's for grades 11 through 12, and that's a half a credit. And then also another item that we discussed was middle school programming beginning the summer of 2021. Credit recovery for middle school students that are failing classes. Okay?
From the curriculum committee.
I'll still move.
All second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations, the report and the recommendations from the curriculum committee meeting, which was held earlier today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the final budget. Mr. Stafford?
Okay, each of you should have in your packet the 2021 budget summary by funds. Those numbers are in the exact same format as the yellow mailer we sent out before the annual meeting. Each year by November 30th, we are required by DPI to upload our final, final budget. So I don't know, I don't know that we've done this in the past, but it, we're coming to you to approve what we actually, what actually is final. The revenue and expense, we always submit a revenue equals expense, expenses equal revenue budget. It's $79,734 more than what we presented for the annual meeting. There were revenue, uh, it was revenue information that we got from DPI with higher numbers. We had higher, final open enrollment, settlements were higher. So that, basically that's what this is. It's really more of a formality, but we do want the board to approve the final budget. And we will actually publish this, uh, one, uh, in the newspaper too, as our final budget.
Rachel, did you hear this? Okay, basically, what Mr. Stafford was saying is that we need a final motion for the final budget from the board. It's approximately $79,000 higher than what was presented at the annual meeting. It is not something we've done in the past, but we're going to, in the future, ask the board for the final, you know, approval on the final numbers after we get word from DPI, when all is said and done, that there was, as I said, $79,000 more in a revenue that occurred. And it came because of open enrollment monies coming back into us was the reason why we got some more.
Well, and changes with the, um, state aid that, you know.
It changes because the state aid was up to $8,200 rather than normally, it was more like $7,200 per student coming on in. And so that was a nice plus.
Yeah. Okay, sure. We would need a motion to approve the final budget.
Dana will second.
And we'll do a roll call vote on this one due to money. Mr. Landwehr?
Yes.
Ms. Sari? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Granland?
Yes.
Mrs. Livingston-Matherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Zawicki? And I vote yes. That motion carries. All right, salary and wage increases for 2021, '22.
You need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion for 2% salary increase for the...
I will make a motion for the 2% salary increase for the, um, st-, uh...
Support staff.
Sorry, I couldn't think of that word. Support staff, as well as the, um, the...
Step increase.
Step, thank you. I cannot find my words. The step increase for the teachers. And of course, um, we can't do anything with bus drivers until they meet with their, for their union.
Negotiations.
Negotiations. That is my motion, thank you.
We'll get it together, we'll get it on the wall.
Can I, can I repeat it back?
Please do.
Yeah, Mrs. Livingston-Matherly is making a motion for 2% salary increase for the support staff and the step increase for teachers. We need to negotiate for bus drivers as per their union contract.
And I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, I don't think we need to read it again.
Oh, thank you.
I think we all know, and...
Oh, thank you.
I believe this is also a roll call vote. So we're going to go backwards this time. Mrs. Zawicki? Mrs. Livingston-Matherly?
Yes.
Mr. Granland?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Mr. Landwehr? And Mrs. Lind, yes. You can say no again if you want.
No.
That motion carries. All right, we are moving on to administrative reports. Um, communications, Dr. Crony?
Notification and directions for the WASB Annual Board Development Tool Survey 2021 was in your packet. And then we're on to Mr. Stafford.
Oh, maintenance update. We have that information in our packets. If you have any questions or comments, Mr. Stafford is here. I guess I could take that down. All right. And then the 100th State Convention, State Education Convention in the year of the pandemic. That's too bad.
It is bad.
It is January 20th through the 22nd, and I think we just need to let Mrs. Janigo know if we, if anyone wants to attend virtually.
Rachel, has Peggy already gotten the early bird on you because you need to attend as our delegate? Has she already registered you?
I don't have my registration, so I can't tell you so.
Okay, I will check.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who's thinking? Otherwise, just let Mrs. Livingston.
I don't have a transportation budget, they gave that away.
Yeah, I think we're all having enough screen time these days, aren't we?
Are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Donations. You have any donations this month?
None.
None, none this month. Okay, WASB and Legislative Correspondence, Mrs. Zawicki?
But I will be representing our district to hold on at the convention. Please let me know beforehand, preferably not the day of, if you need to, if I have those reservations, they are on the WASB website. And if there's any questions that you have about them, just anything, just let me know.
Thank you. CISA 12 report, Ms. Sari?
I may have a meeting tomorrow night, so I'll sign up.
Okay, thank you. We have reports from Northwestern High School, Northwestern Middle School, Northwestern Elementary, and Iron River Elementary Schools, our athletic activities director, our director of special ed, all in our packets. So you've had a chance to read those. Mr. Landwehr?
Thanks Nancy. I had asked Nancy for a few minutes at this particular time. I'm not sure if everybody went very thoroughly through parts of these of your packet. Over the last couple of months, I've used, I feel like a broken record. I've used consistency, I've used frustration, confusion, words a lot. And, and as I was reading these, I had all of those come to the forefront of my head, and I wanted to be able to, to express my, my thoughts. There was an addendum to the high school report to the board. And I, I read it, and I honestly had a difficult time getting through it. For as much as I believe wholeheartedly that the intent behind it is good, true, just, I just can't understand why it is. And I guess I'd like to read it, if that's all right. It won't take me very long, if you guys hadn't read it. It said, "Following a review of student progress through December 2nd, the NHS Student Assistance Team has developed an intervention strategy to be put in place in the event the high school remains in a 100% online model as of December 10th. A strict criteria will be used to identify students who are at risk of significantly falling behind and becoming at risk of not graduating. The exact criteria is still underdeveloped as of this writing, but will likely reflect the number of credits students have not earned as of the beginning of the coronavirus pandemic. Parents of students meeting this criteria will be contacted by phone by NHS administration and student services personnel and encouraged to come to the school to work in the student support center. The benefits of implementing this strategy are, one, to have access to the school's internet connection, two, be provided with a structured environment, and three, to be able to receive basic assistance from student support center staff. Transportation will be provided by the district beginning on Thursday, December 10th, 17th, and will be available for as long as the school is 100% online." I, I could not believe what I was reading in the fact that the... We are, we have, we, I guess I'm going to wrap myself into the we, have continued to say, "Online learning is going well." It's not going well. See, this is telling me that it's not going well because we're, we're specifically choosing students who are not doing well academically. Contacting them, and we're going to transport them to the school so they can have face-to-face learning to get them caught up. For, I don't, I mean, it doesn't say how many students are. I don't think it matters how many students there are that would qualify for this. We have 1,200 to 1,300 students that want to be in school. And I guess maybe, maybe there's not that many that want to be in school. But there's a large percentage of students that want to be in school, that need to be in school for more than just their academic grades. We have, I actually learned recently that there was some staff that have taken it upon themselves to, to get students, bring them into the school, help tutor them, to get them up to speed. There are, I mean, there was a particular art student a number of years ago that, that won a contest, brought money into the district, who was going to finish her, her high school career here, go on to college, and use that. Where's the, where is the consideration for the art students, the drama students, the music students that aren't able to do this in person with their peers? It's, this, this whole thing to me is, I, I, I'm going to use the analogy of a Band-Aid. It, it has a great purpose, but after a while, it's not sticky anymore. It still wants to do its purpose, it just doesn't stick. This whole thing doesn't stick. It, it, it is, it is saying that the only way in my, the way I read it, the only way to get these kids to where they need to be is to do in-person learning. That, that, in my opinion, at this point, after nine months, it's not about the academic grade anymore. It's more than that. Learning for these kids is more than an A or a B or an F. The F list is as large as I think it's ever been. I mean, kids are failing gym. How do you, I don't, I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous to me that this is something that we would isolate particular kids and transport them. And I don't, I mean, now you talk about the logistics, I don't even know how you're going to transport them, considering we don't have any bus drivers that were working right now. You know, staff, it said 60% of staff wasn't comfortable coming in. Where are we staffing this, and how are we staffing this? I, I just... My feeling is I have to advocate for the students, and we haven't done that. And this is telling me that what we're currently doing, the current model, doesn't work. And now we're isolating kids to bring them in to get what we all know is the only way for these kids to make it work is here. So.
May I respond to some of the?
Yeah, absolutely.
I did contact the attorney, as I shared with you that I would, to make sure that this is legal. And the answer to that is, it absolutely is as an intervention, and it doesn't really become a program until you transport them. And how it's happening as far as transportation, we already have routes out there because we have high-needs special ed students who've been with us since November 30th, and they are face-to-face with their teachers. These 10 students started today. It may more...
Are they just, I don't mean to interrupt, are they just seniors because it talks about the, the, um, in, in...
Graduation.
Graduation, yeah. So are they just seniors, or are they multiple grades in high school?
Mr. Carlson?
Can you take your mask off while you talk so we can, so I can better understand?
Yep.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to make a couple of clarifications. These students are not receiving face-to-face instruction. These students are in our student support center, where they are accessing their classes the same way they should be doing it at home. So they are not receiving any face-to-face instruction. It is being staffed by our current student support center staff. So there's nothing additional to that. And, and when I mentioned that they'd be receiving some basic assistance, that would be answering a, a question on technology or helping them with their computer. There's, there's very little work time available for these students because they are attending their classes online from that support center. The rationale of our student assistance team was because of the fact that the board meeting on Thursday, there was a lot of commentary about our, our F list. And we had gone through that list prior to that meeting. And our concern was the number of students who have multiple failures, who have failed to earn credits over the last couple of quarters. Some of them are freshmen, some of them are sophomores. When we look at the juniors and seniors, now we're truly looking at them falling behind as far as being ready for graduation. So that's the, the rationale with that. So it is a wide range. We sent letters out to what we identified was, from that list, the, the students who, um, quite honestly, had been losing the, the most number of credits and were falling the furthest behind. We all understand this. A number of students have a variety of, of issues. It's, it's hard for them to learn online, even our best students. And I have a history with students working online, taking online classes outside of this COVID era. And, and so it, it's, it is a difficult situation for a lot of kids. The kids we identified, however, were ones who were falling behind, regardless of the reason. And we wanted to do what we could do to mainly provide them with the structure so that they didn't have some of those distractions maybe they were having at home and weren't able to, or, or just were not able to themselves do what they needed to do. So again, my main thing, I want to clarify, there is no face-to-face. They're just simply doing what they are supposed to be doing at home, but we're providing a structure for them so that they are better able to do that.
And there's no new monies that, uh, three bus drivers are already employed, to my understanding, for the special ed students to come in anyway. These 10 students are being added into those existing routes, which might make it a little longer than what it might have been to get in here, but they're still getting in here. And kudos to Stacy Fadali because we had told parents Monday and Tuesday, "You're welcome to start early and start right away, but we can't figure out transportation until Thursday because we didn't know until Thursday night that we weren't going to be back." So people were moving pretty quickly with the determination of who would it be that would even be eligible for this. And then parents were able to call, and Stacy said, rather than Monday and Tuesday, she said that she could contact parents, that those who are, those 10, we could get those 10 on Tuesday, so they're able to have transportation right away. Is that correct, Mr. Carlson?
That's correct, yes.
And I would just like to add, um, without appearing rude, and I want, do you want us to stay on track? Because this seems like it's a little bit of a sidebar. But I, I really am offended that you, when you have come out at them saying that there, that, you know, we've really shown through our decision that we don't care about the students, that we're only thinking about, you know, perhaps our sta-, the staff or whatever. I couldn't disagree with you more. My decision is based on the safety of the students. And I really am sorry if there are some people in the public or people even on this board that don't see that, that we are in, that it's very important when we are in a pandemic and we have a disease that is spreading right now. But the reality is, we're not doing online because we're trying to punish the kids and we're trying to punish, um, people. We're doing it because we feel it is the best, safest route based on what we have with research and medical science. And I understand that we aren't in agreement on this. You are very firm on your side, and I, I respect that. But I do want it put on the record that to simply say, "Because of our decision, we don't have the children's best interest," couldn't be more false.
And, and I don't mean to sidebar this anymore. I, I did specifically ask to be able to talk on this. But in, in, in response to what you just said, doing what's safest and, and using, and, and this was 30 seconds old, so, so I... You said, "Using the, the resources available to us to make good decisions." We had those decisions on Thursday, and we threw them away. The, the county nurse said, "Go back to school." They, they, they said that. Dr. Fauci has said, "Put the kids back in school." The COVID vaccine has now hit Wisconsin, and it specifically said, I read it last night, "Nobody under the age of 16 should take it because the risk isn't there." So when you look at all of the stuff that are, the, that specific information, we ignored it. And now we have this.
I disagree, and I do not feel you are right on that. And I also feel you are backpedaling on something that we've already dealt with.
I, I, and that's not what, I, I wasn't talking about that. I didn't bring that up, you did. So what I'm saying is, have we talked to any, if we're worried about grades, is it because we're worried about getting them to graduate? Or we're worried about the health of the child and getting them through that? If that's the case, have we surveyed the students to see how they're doing mentally? And if a child is failing mentally, are we going to give them the same opportunity to come in and learn here, even though it's not face-to-face? Because I would send four. That's all I'm saying. And I appreciate your time, Nancy, in allowing me to speak, or, thank you.
If I'm reading this right, would these students then be coming back to school on the 4th? So really, this is only this week and two days next week?
That's it.
Are you asking me that question? Or Dr. Crony? Or Dr. Cronin?
No, it's for you.
Oh, yeah. Yes, that would be our hope, that they would come back. Many of those students currently have chosen to be online prior to this situation. And that, that's kind of an issue. We have, you know, quite honestly, without deviating into that. But our encouragement would be, yes, that all these students that are currently coming in as part of this program would come once we go back 100%, or invite students back to be on-campus learning, yes.
So you would be encouraging them to show up at the door?
Absolutely. And if the decision on Thursday would have been different, our phone calls on Friday, rather than inviting them to come in into this format, we would have been highly encouraging them to come attend classes rather than staying online as the majority of them had chosen to do.
Thank you. Anyone else on this subject?
So we can call this a virtual truant officer?
I have something. I, I would actually just like to thank Dana for saying that for, for the reason being, there is not one person in this room, in the audience, or anywhere that doesn't want the best for the students. What the definition is of what's best for the students is the question. And I would argue that, you know, we, we can go with whatever data and facts that we have from the WHO, or from the CDC, and all the rest of that. And of course, they changed their minds. And if they've ever changed their mind, that means that they weren't exactly right all the time. But what's best for the student, in my mind, and I think most of us would agree, is teachers and staff that are engaged, that I feel like they're, they're being listened to, that, that want to be there, and they all do, I believe. And it wasn't 60% teacher. It was more like 80%, because when we looked at the, the numbers, there was 50-some teachers that felt that it was not safe. There was 13 felt that it was safe. And there was the neutral category. Neutral is neutral. We don't lump them with either side. So it was really about an 80/20 on the teacher's feeling to come back.
Madam Presidente? I don't, I don't see this on the agenda item.
It's time to go to
I was, I was just gonna like to redirect
Keep your movement, please.
I just have one thing I, I would like to say, is I, these students wouldn't have been identified if they weren't in contact with the staff, and the staff with the principals. And I think they're doing a very good job in, under these conditions. So thank you so much.
All right. I think we'll, we don't want to rehash everything that happened at our last meeting tonight. So let's move along. We would love to hear from our student representatives at this time. And I'll also ask you to please take your mask off while you speak so that my old lady ears can understand better.
Lucy's going first.
Hello. To start off, the drama team was awarded with an All-State Award for their virtual drama competition at the state level. They did an outstanding job with their recorded radio play, "The Happy Prince." Senior Lily Kane also received a personal drama award for outstanding acting. All awards were well-deserved, and the drama team's hard work was paid off. The link leaders have continued to meet virtually to discuss potential activities in the upcoming months. Activities such as cocoa and cramb, and door decorating might have to look a little different this year. And the link leaders are continuing to put hard work and thought into how we can continue those activities. The Student Council has had, has had a lot going on over the last month. There was a hunting competition over Thanksgiving break, where students were able to post a picture with the buck they shot over hunting season. The winner, Dylan Anderson, with the biggest buck, won a $20 gift card to Gander Outdoors from the Student Council. The Student Council also is in the midst of their annual toy drive for kin. Everything is a little different this year, and collecting toys themselves is difficult. So the Student Council organized a GoFundMe for those willing to donate to help this cause. All of the money raised will go towards toys to be donated to kin. The choir was planning on doing a recorded concert, where each choir member sends in a recording of themselves singing their choir pieces to be combined later to create the sound of our choir being together. After a lot of thought, and even more technical difficulties, they have decided to postpone their winter concert and perform when we are back together in January. The band is working on producing a holiday sing-along video on YouTube, featuring some of their holiday favorites for their winter concert this year. And FCA began having virtual meetings on Friday mornings. Their group gets together to share a devotion, pray for one another, and catch up with each other. Anyone is welcome to join via Zoom on Friday mornings at 7:30. And as our, as one of our student body's school board representatives, the president of the Student Council, and the senior class, I feel a responsibility and obligation to let you know that our student body is struggling, both academically and emotionally. Our guidance counselors and our teachers are doing the best they can to meet the needs of our students, and for that, we are greatly appreciative. That being said, while some of our students are surviving at home and appreciating the option to remain online, there are many of us who desperately need to return to school. The comments made by school board members lead many to believe that I haven't adequately represented our student body, and for that, I am very sorry. To be clear, seven days does matter. Seven days would have made a world of difference. Our school holiday traditions, our time with teachers and peers, the special touches from our cafeteria staff this time of year, and face-to-face learning, we appreciate it. Many of us need it. And the classes that will follow this year's seniors will never take them for granted again. Respectfully, please do what you can to get us back in school.
Lucy, thank you. Also, just a question. Last I heard, the postponement for the holiday choir concert was gonna be January 8th. Did you hear anything differently?
Uh, no, it should be January 8th. That is what I heard as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comment.
Hello, I am Trent Jawoski. I'd just like to say I agree with Lucy's statement. But I'll get into our sports side of the student activities. Mr. McGrath received a Wisconsin's Cross Country Coaches Association Award for District 1 Cross Country Boys Coach of the Year. The football team received the Academic All-State Award. They are one of 29 teams in the state to do so. All fall sports have officially finished, and we are now on to winter sports. Wrestling. The wrestling team is looking very good so far. They defeated Baron 58 to 18 last Tuesday to kick off their season. They'll wrestle Spooner at home tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Boys basketball. Boys basketball is 2-1 with big wins over Spooner in St. Croix Falls by 20-plus points each. They play next tomorrow in Ladysmith, and both of their wins are conference wins, and their loss is out of conference. Girls' basketball, girls' basketball is currently 2-1 as well, and they play at home tomorrow against St. Croix Falls in Lower Jim, 7:00 PM. The dance team, dancers had a great season so far, with dancers from each grade. So far, they've danced at every home game, performing the school song and the dance they choreographed, they choreographed to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Student, staff, and community recognition. We heard about Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Congratulations to him. Are there any others?
Nope, nope, that was the most important one.
Okay. Comments from the audience. "This is not the forum for school District of Maple personnel concerns. The public needs to refrain from the use of names or specific positions when used in a negative manner. If you have concerns that involve personnel or staff members, please contact the building principal or the superintendent." Are there any comments from the audience tonight? If so, I would ask you to go to the mic. And can you just tell us your names, please?
Yep, my name, my name is Jeremiah Glonek. My kids are Jordi and Jacy.
My wife, Amy.
Jeremiah?
This may be a little difficult for us to start, but we will be able to finish strongly. We here
I'm sorry, step to the mic a little closer, maybe.
Yeah, because we've got a person on, on the phone that wouldn't, a board member wouldn't be able to hear. Also, I've gotta take the minutes tonight, so I, I heard Jeremiah. And, is that correct?
Yep.
And last name, sir?
Glonek.
G-L-O-N-E-K?
Yep.
G-L-O-N-E-K. Got it, okay. And then we have to know that we're a township?
Poplar.
Poplar, thank you. And then, and your name, ma'am?
Amy.
Amy, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We are both here tonight as parents that also feel like those seven days do matter. We feel that the inconsistency that Adam continues to talk about when making decisions is starting to take its toll on everybody. The teachers, the staff, the parents, and the students. There are so many decisions being made emotionally and not looking at the data and what is in front of us. Our reality is here, and it doesn't matter what is happening in other parts of the world, or other countries, or other school districts, because we are here, and this is our reality. I just want to thank Adam for continuing to fight for the children, and I believe that you all feel you are doing the same. It doesn't feel like it from the parent's perspective when the decisions are being made to continually go back and forth to school. We do want the students and the staff safe, and we feel that it is safe as they have been able to return with minimal cases and minimal symptoms of this disease we continue to talk about and make life inconsistent for everybody. At the time that the decision was made to close school, this was in November, we were under the impression as parents that it was because the staff was not available to teach. And of course, we were happy to have our children home when there wasn't enough staff to teach. Now, we've been told the staff is available. There are two staff members in the whole district that would not be able to return to their jobs. And now we feel like we're being told otherwise, that it is because of family vacations, it is because of nursing homes, and things that are really not relevant to school. I know not everybody feels the same way, and I can respect that. But our child is starting to fade, and quickly. We haven't said anything for three weeks because we thought we were going back to school. He's very vibrant, social, and does well when he's at school. The behavior in him and his peers have continued to change in negative ways that we don't see when he's at school. And he's become very irritable by having to be forced to sit in front of a screen to get an education. Our pediatrician has recommended one hour per day for health reasons and sanity. And we feel that you're choosing otherwise. There is an option to be online, and there is an option to go to school. And we were given that option, and it was taken away. My husband has a few things that he would like to say, but the inconsistencies with the decision-making is starting to take its toll.
Yeah, firstly, I'd like to thank Lucy and Trent for their statement. These kids are screaming out to get school open. I can't even talk about it. I'm not even an emotional person, and this is ridiculous. Some of you say you're putting the kids first, and you're not. As a school board member, kids come first. The way to fix all of this is open the school. Do not let this happen again on January 4th. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the audience? Thank you. Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Gail.
I will second.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries.